Cat off and everything.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two, roll call.
Nelson?
Here.
Orison?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Wunschel?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Moriarty?
Here.
Item three is the consent agenda. Three A is a motion to approve the City Council minutes of September 8, 2020. B, licenses. Approve ownership update and renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and catering privilege for Sports Page Bar &amp; Grill, and renewal of Class C beer permit with Sunday sales for Cargo Express, both subject to final approval by Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a motion to approve purchase of two 20-yard roll-off containers and an 18, two-yard rear-load containers for the Solid Waste Division from Elliott Equipment out of Grimes, Iowa, for a total of $17,328. This is a CIP item. D is a motion to approve sidewalk construction and assessment agreement for Benjamin and Janine Van Zwol, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, 902 Second Avenue Southeast, and Larry and Martha Lane of 821 East Fourth Street. E is a resolution approving official 2019 to 20 fiscal year street finance report. F is a resolution proposing the sale and transfer of city real property from Sioux Line, Chicago and Milwaukee and St. Paul Railway Railroad right-of-way located in the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 6 Township 96 North, range 36 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Clay County, Iowa, consisting of approximately 20,388.5 square feet. Scheduling a public hearing and directing the publication of notice with a hearing date for October 5, 2020 at 6:30 PM. This has been discussed and recommended by the Economic Development Committee. G is a motion to approve a three-year agreement for the ESRI-GIS software maintenance agreement shared by the City, County, and SMU. This is to be tabled, right?
Correct. We'd like to recommend tabling item G.
All right, so we're gonna pull item G out of the consent agenda, and I'll come to that after the consent agenda. So item G is not included in these. And that concludes the consent agenda. So items A through F. First by Ron? Second by Lauren? Was that Lauren or George?
That was George.
That was George. Did it again? All right, first by Ron, second by George. Discussion questions on these items? All right. Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye. Wunschel?
Aye.
Thank you. Item three, G, is a motion to approve a three-year agreement for the ESRI-GIS software maintenance agreement shared by the City, County, and SMU. I believe some developments today have arisen, and we would request that this be tabled to gather some more data for a later decision. First by Bill. Second by Tom. Discussion on this?
When will this come back?
October 5.
Oh, for the next week.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item four, Old Business, is an ordinance amending the zoning classification of real property owned by IGL Construction LLC, locally known as 221 32nd Avenue West, and amending the official zoning map. IGL has reached out to City Hall and has requested that we table this until the next meeting. They have some final documentation regarding the final plat and paperwork that they would like to make sure is correct. And so they still do have the request of putting the second and third readings together, just tabling it from this meeting to the next meeting, October 5. First by Ron. Second by Lauren. Any questions or discussions? Don, do we need a motion or a roll call vote on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Motion. What's that? Oh, hang on.
This is the rezon.
Keep the rezon?
Yeah. My understanding is they just wanted to table the final plat and the development agreement, which is item A under New Business.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, that's my mistake. Can't rewind the tape? Okay, item four A is an ordinance amending the zoning classification of real property owned by IGL Construction LLC, locally known as 221 32nd Avenue West, and amending the official zoning map.
Yeah, we need to withdraw that.
So I'm the first one, right? So I want to withdraw my.
All right, Ron rescinds the motion to table. All right, second by Lauren. Assume we have to vote on that then, Don?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, the motion is rescinded. So we reset to what I just read, four A. Ordinance amending the zoning classification of real property owned by IGL Construction LLC, locally known as 221 32nd Avenue West, and amending the official zoning map.
I'll make a motion on that. You're doing a good job.
Yeah, thank you. I like to be thorough, you know? First by Ron. Second by Lauren. Questions, discussion related to four A?
So Amanda, this is just rezoning it from, wasn't it from mobile home?
Mobile home to residential.
Mayor, I believe this is the motion to suspend the rules.
Yep. So under four A, one, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring certain ordinances to be placed on file at two meetings prior to the meeting at which it is adopted to be suspended. First by Tom. Second by George. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And now the final filing, which is four A, two. An ordinance amending the zoning classification of real property owned by IGL Construction LLC, locally known as 221 32nd Avenue West, and amending the official zoning map. This is the third and final filing. First by Tom. Second by Lauren. Discussion, questions on this? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye. Wunschel?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item five, New Business. Five A is a resolution approving and accepting the final plat of Westfield by IGL First Edition and approved development agreement. This has been discussed at the Economic Development Committee. At the request of the developer, they would like this tabled to the next meeting. First by Bill. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye. Wunschel?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five B is a resolution accepting work on 2020 Spencer Seal Coat Project. First by Tom. Second by George. Discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye. Wunschel?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five C is a resolution accepting work on the 2020 crack and joint sealing project.
I'll make a motion on that.
First by Ron. Second by Bill. Discussion on this?
Mark, just a question. How did this? How did this project work for us this year? And were you happy with the results on the roads that we got done with the seal?
Yeah, we had a new contractor this year. It went really well. Very happy with the end product and have swept most of the rock off. Of course, a little bit of it will continue to move and we'll sweep them again, but it's a good project. Turned out well.
So the contractor was new and we're very happy with it?
Yep, right on the money. And the engineer's right behind us, too. So he was happy as well.
He was happy, too.
No, it did. It was good.
All right, thank you.
Above average, I would say.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye. Wunschel?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item five D is a motion to accept the City of Spencer Parks and Recreation Master Plan dated September 2020, as prepared by Stockwell Engineers Incorporated. First by George. Second by Tracy. Questions or discussion on this item?
I heard you talk.
How'd you say? Was that you, Tom? I missed it. I'll get you next time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We look forward to moving to the next phase of the master plan, trying to find the budget and the resources and the passionate people to move some of those projects forward. Five E is a motion to approve application for a water recreation access cost share grant through the Iowa Department of Natural Resources to redesign and enhance the boat launch to the Little Sioux River in West Leach Park. This includes a 25% local match. First by Bill. Second by Lauren. Questions or discussion on this? Come on up, Jared.
Yeah, so we're trying to, as you know, the boat ramp in West Leach Park has issues with silting in. I think we scooped off.
Four feet of mud?
Off of that particular boat ramp. Just the way it's designed, it just catches all that silt and everything else coming down the river when it gets high. So with an increase in water recreation and the usage of kayaks in here, we've seen this year, we found it a good opportunity to try to redesign that, expand the parking area, make that a little bit better. It's currently just really muddy. To try to expand that, fit some boats, trailers with vehicles on there, give them a little bit more space, angle that boat ramp downstream a little bit, so it's gonna be more self-cleaning. It's not gonna be 100%, but a little bit better design to try to redesign that and create a better opportunity for people to use that. We're gonna use rock for now. Yep, yep, so.
Any other questions for Jared? Though we look forward to any and all improvements that can happen down there. There'll be less shoes stuck after people get out of their kayak. Hopefully.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those. Sorry, Donovan. Do you have a vote, Donovan? All those opposed? Still there, Donovan?
Yep, I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Item six, Department head reports. We will start with the Planning Department. Amanda?
Just a brief update. The Planning Department certainly is staying busy as construction has not slowed down and we don't anticipate it to do that for a while. Anna has been diligently working with the DNR on floodplain matters. So I'd encourage residents, if they have questions about their property, to contact Anna Harmon directly. She's doing a great job with that. And that's what I have.
Amanda, is there a deadline of when the residents need to do anything? Or is it still kind of up?
If they are going to be impacted by the new maps, they will receive a letter.
Thank you. B, Library. Mandy? Is she here? Are you on the phone, Mandy? Nope. C, Fire Department. Chief Conian?
Good evening, Madam Manager, Mayor. Counsel. Your fire department in August, we answered 55 calls for service with a breakdown of EMS runs, dealing with difficulty breathing, back pain, COVID patients, as well as seizure and diabetic reactions. Our housed ambulance that sits in our station answered four calls with diabetic reactions, congestive heart failure, lymphocyst, and kidneys. Our fire calls varied from a tree. At the tree site, the tree burning site, we had a rather large fire that we showed a lot of synergy in between Public Works and the fire department. We got it out. We also had a dumpster fire that was pretty popular by a bunch of people, some gas leaks, food on the stove. And the big call for August this year was the Ag Partners explosion, which was really something to be a part of, but more important, offering our services to the outlanding, outlying communities, as well as doing a hot wash to figure out why and the what and how we can move better in a command a situation like that. And that was really good. Special duty calls include some smoke detectors, as well as some CO detector movement. We helped the PD this, in August, look for a child, which was, it's always great to, you know, have resources that can do that and continue to move forward with that. And lastly, was flying the flag for the National Guard that left our community. And that's, you know, forever an honor to be a part of that. Our trainings included water rescue a few times, as well as using the training tower and learning how to do second floor and third floor fire attacks. And one last note for the canoe ramp. One of the other things that's gonna be great is one that's cleaned up even more. Just imagine how great this year's blazing pines will look. And that'll be pretty cool. So I'm looking forward to it. Any questions, sir?
Just wanna give a thanks to you. I had Chief Conian come to one of my rental houses and do an inspection for me before I had some tenants move in. And he caught a lot of things that I just hadn't thought of and wouldn't have thought of and got done because of his suggestions and also was given a couple of smoke detectors. And I've got another house empty right now that I would ask for you to do the same thing.
You bet.
And just want you to know, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the future. The future looks pretty bright for our community and wanting to explore this as a more frequent thing. Any other questions? Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Chief. Police Department, Chief Warburton?
Good evening. The Spencer Police Department responded to 1,071 calls for service the month of August and performed 45 arrests. The month of August, we saw department-wide training. Chief Conian came in and taught the entire department hazardous material training, as well as we had in-house instructors re-certify the entire department on TASER recertification, so. Police Department did a media blast with the Spencer Public Schools centered around school bus safety. We continued that with a radio spot, as well as Daily Reporter and a radio spot on KICD. Nuisance vehicles. Earlier this spring, the department canvassed Spencer. We located 60 vehicles that match, that fit into that category. Last week, I'm happy to announce that we finished moving the last one without our intervention as far as towing any. So we did really good. Spencer deserves an A+ this year. Finally, Lakes Area Law Enforcement Co-op is now accepting applications for police officer in the Lakes area, as well as the Spencer Police Department. So if anybody's interested in applying for a job, you need to go to the Dickinson County Sheriff's Office website. Apply online. Application deadline is October 2 at 4 PM. Any questions?
Do you ever think we're an officer?
No, we are not. No, but the co-op is. Estrobel has an opening right now that they're not able to fill, so.
Thank you, Chief. E, Public Works. Mark?
Good evening again. A couple council meetings ago, we talked a little bit about the sidewalk program. And since the start of the program, there's been 459 walks put in. And I think Donovan, who's listening on the phone, I know, has mentioned we should revive that project and breathe a little new life into it. And thanks to our friends at the media and along with the social media posts, we've had 18 new applications since we talked about that. So that really shows that getting the word out makes a difference. So that was rewarding. We did some sewer training at the Street Division, forklift training. On the sewer training, that was for some new-style jet nozzles and procedures on cleaning sewers to hopefully reduce issues with that. Personally, we've been working on the capital improvement plan, working through the divisions, meeting with the supervisors and trying to figure out what the needs would be. And last but not least, would like to welcome a new employee, Sebastian Holsman, to the Solid Waste Division. Other than that, that was pretty brief tonight, unless there's questions.
I assume you haven't been able to use the new mosquito machine yet?
We have not. We have not. That's all right. I'm with Ron. I'm with Ron. So, yeah, we got it dialed in. We're just, hopefully, they'll hold off a while, so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Parking and Rec. Jared?
Good evening. So on trails, Howery started to work on 4th Avenue Southwest Trail. They're moving right along. I'll let Ross go into a little bit more detail there, but they're doing a nice job down there. As far as cleaning our trails, we're trying to keep up with that. We've had some tractor issues. We haven't been able to clean those as often as we'd like. So we've had some unexpected equipment breakdowns there, so that's holding us up a little bit. Bob Rose and Mike Harlemann put together fundraising for trail maintenance. We had a kickoff event at Stollie's, and we've raised quite a bit of money for that trail maintenance. So it's, every little bit helps and we definitely appreciate it. So thank you to all the individuals and businesses that have donated to that maintenance fund. Just a reminder for trees in the city right-of-way. Prior to planting and removing those trees, you need to apply for a permit to be approved before you do any sort of planting or removal on the tree right-of-way. So we've had just a couple issues. Just a friendly reminder that that needs to get done. Here in the last couple weeks, we've had several service projects, one from C&amp;B Operations. They painted some of our shelter houses in our parks, as well as Williams and Company CPAs. They also painted the dugouts for Cardinal Field. So I'd like to thank them for helping us out, getting some of those projects done and finished up. We've also been talking with YMCA, Trails Association, Love Where You Live Group, and Clay County Conservation Board to provide some events here in the fall, winter, and then potentially next spring. So we've put some dates on the calendars for different things, so we're trying to work out some more details and everything else, but more details to come on that. We continue to work on our CIP and future projects. Like to try to set up a meeting here in the next week or so to discuss some of the projects. We can go after on some funding sources, potentially to look at that came out of that master parks plan. So, and came out of our strategic planning process as well. So I'd like to keep that ball rolling and look at what we can do for projects and get some things narrowed down to go after. Rocket Slide? Still gonna. Still gonna continue to work on that this winter. We have submitted a, to try to work with the No Boundaries Group, as well as any other business or organization or individuals that would like to be a part of helping restore that piece of Spencer history, trying to work through that process and get it back up in service and trying to work on that through the winter, so.
Jared, I see in the newspaper that you're working on trees in the river that are blocking the distance. How are you doing that? Is that from on land or you got a boat out?
So that was in coordination with a park board member and big help from the Street Department and the park staff. So we had a piece of equipment on the bank and we had individuals actually in the river on the sandbar taking those trees out and then hauling them up and hauling them back into the woods, piece by piece.
Where were they at?
They were in West Leach Park.
Oh, I see.
Yep. So between the Foot Bridge in West Leach and Thunder Bridge, so. Trying to open that up a little bit so kayakers have an easier time and boaters when the water's a little bit higher to get through there. Sometimes when that stuff's higher, you can't see that stuff.
There's quite a few up Little Sioux, too.
Yep.
There's one right behind my house, in fact. It's pretty little block.
There's quite a few on there, so we, it's a big challenge to try to get those out of there and it takes a lot of time and there's continuously trees falling in there. So it's not an easy process, but to get a few of the bigger ones out of there was a good thing, so.
That river's widened out about a foot to two feet on both sides.
Yep. Yep. And we tried to take advantage of the low water, so we were able to get down there and get to most of them, so.
Thank you. Jared, I have a question regarding the master plan.
Yeah.
And you alluded to the fact there's some things in there you want to work on. Do you see that impetus coming from the park board or from the park committee of the council?
I'd like to work together on that stuff. Yep. So bringing members of, a member or two from the park board, members of the Parks, Culture, and Rec Committee coming together to define those priorities and work as a team and then try to get those goals moving forward together.
The other question I have is that Bob and Mike happened to talk to us at Rotary today and told us about the dollars that they have raised. Is it feasible or is that part of your CIP plan possibly Is it, is it feasible, or is that part of your CIP plan possibly, to do a match, a match with whatever they raised?
Yep, so.
In order to get that done, because it sounded like a big dollar amount if you had to replace the whole thing.
Yep, so it's going to be an ongoing process that, that maintenance of that trails and concrete isn't cheap. And so, yeah, and the CIP in the past, I think Delrayd asked for five thousand. I'm going to ask for ten thousand as a match in our CIP to try to help move that along. I don't want to get to a point where we have so much trail to, to take care of and replace, and we just can't keep up on an annual basis, it's just going to pile up and back up and back up.
I've been surprised at how much the trail along the middle school and up towards where we live, how much that, that concrete has deteriorated in the last two years.
Yep. Doesn't take long.
No, it doesn't. Crack's starting to get bigger.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Jared.
Thank you.
Golf course? I don't know Brian.
The cross-country meet is happening out of the course today.
Good luck Tigers. Item H, city attorney report, Don?
Thank you Mayor. I would describe the challenges that we worked with in August as being fairly typical. We attacked a couple of nuisance situations on East Eleventh Street and East Ninth Street. East Eleventh is typical. It got fairly well cleaned up, and last week, it was reported that it had begun to accumulate again. This is one of the problems with nuisances, but we haven't been quite as effective as the police chief, but we're working on it. Of course, we've been involved with the IGL development, and I think we'll be ready for you on October 5th. We've redrafted two chapters of the city code concerning electrical board and electric inspections. And Amanda will bring, bringing those to you or to a committee, I think, fairly soon. I think we have a good chance to, to clean up some of those issues that some of you've talked about. We spent about ten hours in magistrate's court, and most of that time involved dogs, once again. August is the time to look at farm leases, and we did that with Mark, and really, we didn't have too much work to do there, but we've got those things in order. And we had the two rezonings that were addressed during the month. Any questions?
Alright, thank you Don. Item seven, engineers report, Russ?
Good evening, Mayor. Couple projects to report on, on the West Forest Street Storm Sewer Project. Vander Paul closed the street last week, West Forest Street between First and Second Avenue West. They've been working on storm sewer, and this week, they'll continue to work on storm sewer and do some water main work. They've probably got a couple of weeks of underground work to do, and then put the pavement back. So that street will be closed for several weeks yet. Over on the Fourth Avenue Southwest recreational trail, Howery should be done pouring concrete on that trail tomorrow. They've paved, the trail itself is a little less than a mile, and they've paved most of that in the last four workdays. So that project's really, really moving along quickly. Their other crew, their dirt crew will be into backfill, starting tomorrow already. So I anticipate that, that project to be wrapped up, other than the sign work, and probably some seeding within the next week, so.
Are they going to haul away the dirt, or are they going to just level it in there for fear that filling in that drainage ditch?
So, so most of the dirt that's left on site will be used to backfill. We won't necessarily be filling in the drainage ditch at all, we just need to create a, a safe slope away from the trail. There is some excess fill that's been placed on the golf course property on the south end that we've been working with Brian with. So, so I would say most of, most of the dirt that's on site will be used to backfill.
It looks nice, I mean, I think it's going to get well-used, it's.
Yeah.
That neighborhood has a lot of walkers.
Yes, we've, we've had a lot of excitement from the public down there.
Yeah, I bet you have.
During construction, so. Any other questions?
Just have one question on, are you kind of a common, comment thread on the, the trail system? Like we heard tonight about it wearing out?
Yep.
Are there prerequisites for, for the thickness of the concrete, the type of concrete? Is it, is there something we can do, even though it might be more expensive upfront, to give us longevity better?
Yeah, so I would say, everything we've done probably in the last five or six years has been six-inch thick concrete, which is, which is typical, typically what we use for street pavement. When I started here ten to twelve years ago, we weren't paving that thick. You know, we were putting in trails that maybe were four to five inches thick, you know, and it didn't take long to see that. We need to be building stronger trails, mainly, well, for several different reasons, but sometimes it's the equipment that gets used on them, or, or you know, things that get driven on them, that are, that are really hard on the thin pavements. Some of what you're seeing, like along Tenth Avenue East, I think has a lot to do with that. So it's thinner pavement, heavy equipment, and so you're seeing a lot of cracks. But it's kind of the same down in West Leach Park, so.
We also, out around Schooling Park, we are.
Presentation today at Rotary on that, I don't know what funds are raised for. And they're saying they're going to six inches on that out there, but they're also going to have rebar in it. Is that, have they talked to you about that?
Possibly. Most of the trail we're building right now is unreinforced, because we are using a six-inch pavement, which is, which is plenty of strength for, for a recreational trail. There, there may be places that need to be reinforced if they're seeing a lot of movement because of high moisture in the soils. You know, that, that would help hold that pavement together.
Which is certainly the problem on around.
Yes, yep, definitely, so.
There's eighty-some squares out there that they're talking about fixing.
Could very well be. I know, I know out there, there's also a centerline joint in some of that trail.
Yes.
That's walking apart. Pretty bad.
Dangerous on tires?
Yes, very much so. Bike tires.
So Ross, some of it I know is just because of the kind of equipment that we do use to remove snow. Is there, are we causing some of the problems ourselves that we just need from a CIP standpoint to be looking at a lighter vehicle to be doing that? Because I'm assuming, like on Tenth Avenue East, most of that, probably, I'm assuming is from truck, the, the, when, whatever the truck pickup that they use to clean the snow. Is there, should we be looking at a different type of equipment, so that, are we, are we causing our own problems?
I, I don't know if, if all of it's because of the snow removal equipment, but some of it could be, depending on what's being driven on it. I'm not exactly sure what's used to clean it, but.
It just kind of looks like it's areas that have been driven on.
There's some areas that, you know, we use a tractor, smaller tractor, sometimes clean that, clean that stuff off of there. And usually that stuff can handle a truck and a plow blade and stuff, which is typical of what we use. Take the trucks on there, then it's about it, but sometimes we do take a small tractor, yeah. There's our, there are, you know, UTVs, different utility vehicles that can have a brush on the front of it to, to maybe help curb some of that, but, yep. Out of Stollies, it's hard, sometimes we have to pick, just to keep that north end open, a payloader on there, and that's obviously not, not good on it, but. Is there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you Ross. Item eight, city manager's report, Amanda?
Thank you Mayor. I did send you all an email this afternoon regarding strategic planning 2.0. So all of the notes from our session are in there. And if you were listed as a team convener, I did send you an email today to try and set up a time later this week or early next week to talk about next steps. Next year is Spencer's 150th birthday, and so the Spencer Chamber is working hard on putting together plans for that. So if you have an interest in being involved, contact Becky at the Chamber. Tomorrow evening at 5:30 here in Council Chambers, Burglin and Cram are going to be conducting a public input meeting on design guidelines for downtown. And then lastly, this is Farm Safety Week, and for some harvest has already begun, for some, it's just starting. My, my own family, it's been about a year since we were impacted by, by a farm accident. And so I just want to remind everyone that it's, it's a busy time for farmers, so give them room on the road. And there's always work to be done the next day, so farmers, make sure you get home to your families and your communities. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Alright, thank you Amanda. Item nine, mayor's report, just a couple items. I'd like to echo the thank you to Mike Harlemann and Bob Rose. As I stated at the kickoff, one of the most exciting parts of government is when the private sector is very excited about something and they can partner with the public sector. And so to see the passion that they have, I believe they've already raised over twelve thousand dollars in the span of like less than two weeks. And so I'm encouraged to hear, Jared will be recommending some more funds in the CIP for trail maintenance. I know Mike had said after they get a little further into it, he might come to the council and encourage some matching funds. So excited to see that move forward. I'd like to thank all the shoppers who went downtown for the Main Street unfair, no fair sales that they had downtown. I know my son went down to the card shop and bought some other stuff along the way back to get to the car, so. It's, it's just good to see vibrancy downtown. And so thank you to Main Street and the business owners and shoppers and everybody involved in that. It's definitely a regional destination, our town is, and when we see that, we're reminded of that. And then I would just touch on COVID very quick. Colette Rositer from the hospital was on our call today. There is an uptick in some cases, if you follow the numbers. Just in case you do follow the numbers, a quick reminder of how the positivity rate percentage is reached. It's a rolling fourteen-day average, so what that means is, it's a snapshot fourteen days backwards from the date that you're looking at it. That's the positivity rate, which means the number of positive cases versus negative cases for all those tested in that fourteen-day period. And so when you see that number go up and down, it can go up and down based on the number of tests that come in. So there's not a whole lot of tests, per se, that happen in our area. And so if a large number of tests come in in a certain day, you might see that positivity rate jump quite a bit, and it might hang there for a while, and then it'll drastically drop once that bubble gets through that fourteen-day window. And so we asked Colette, the rising cases that are in our county, they are in the eighteen-to-forty-year-old demographic. And I bring that up because I just wanted people to be clear that while school is back in session, and there are a couple little kiddos that have positive cases, it's not the children age that is driving the percentage to go up. It is still the young adults that we predominantly, predominantly see across the state of Iowa in that eighteen-to-forty-year-old bracket. So as you watch the data, just understand the data, and continue to take the precautions necessary. She encouraged social distancing again, you know, just a reminder, we all do that, but just a reminder that that really helps to stay six feet apart and just practice good hygiene, wash your hands and things of that nature. So that is what I have. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes Bill?
Question on, if, if someone wanted to, say they're going to take, they're going to have, they're flying to someplace, and then before they go, they'd like to be tested to make sure that they're not. Where does one do that in Clay County?
You'd have to, I believe you'd have to register for Iowa test site. There are none in the county, there's, there's still one in Dickinson?
There's one in Dickinson.
Okay, that's where you would have to go.
Okay, that's more of a public thing, I was just curious.
Yep, and as always, you know, they always say, contact your doctor, they'll send you to the respiratory clinic, do a screening, and then they determine, but anybody can get a test at the test Iowa sites. Good question.
With your discussions, has it ever, has it come up at all about the transmittal of the COVID from students like to an adult? As of last week, I'd heard that there was, had no verified case that had ever happened, and I wondered.
I don't know George, a lot of that's HIPAA-protected, you know, on who has it and who doesn't, and certainly, we have not seen an outbreak at the school. So, and they do a great job, you know, they're all taking the necessary precautions, the staff, as well as the children, and so I think, I think they're doing a good job. Okay, thank you. Item 10, council committee reports, upcoming meetings?
We just have our regular city council meeting on Monday, October 5th at 6:30 PM.
Item 11, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. It looks like you have a handout of some additional ones as well. No?
Street finance.
Street finance, okay, sorry. First by Lauren. Second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, other opportunity to address the council, would anyone like the platform?
I'll put a plug in for Main Street. Saturday, I think it, is it from nine to noon? They're having the tour once again, if you ever, if you're always curious of what's on the second floor of some of the buildings downtown, I think there are three or four buildings that are going to be open to the public to look at.
I believe Nancy said it started at the Masonic Lodge.
Yes, it starts at Masonic Lodge, if you get tickets ahead of time, you get a, a salmon roll or something.
Yep, salmon roll and coffee.
Not made by Kevin Talan, that's not an option. And the other one is, and I didn't know for sure, the Riverside Cemetery cleaning of the tombstones, is that a city project? Or was that, I think it, from the public standpoint, if anybody wants to volunteer, apparently you bring work gloves and old clothes and help scrub, scrub down tombstones and that sort of thing.
Yeah, it's a Historic Preservation Commission project.
So those are the two things that I thought the public ought to be aware of.
Thank you Bill, Tom?
I'll circle back to Main Street and report that I believe all the building lights are on. We're waiting for some controllers to arrive and, in the next week or so. And once those are put up and tested and everything, you should see the lights turned on from the bridge clear up to the north end.
Awesome. Anyone else? Alright, seeing none, I'll move to 13, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We'll give it, we'll give the first to Donovan, he hasn't had one all night. Second, Lauren? Okay. Any discussion? Sorry Tom, we'll get you next time. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned, have a safe drive home.
See ya.
Thanks Donovan.